All right, six P M. This is the City of Riverbank Regular Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Call the meeting in order. Can we have roll call, please?
Yes, um, Vice, our Chair Stuart is excused absence, so Vice Chair Zamora.
Here.
Commissioner John Diamond.
Here.
Commissioner Michael Sid Alterman.
Here.
Commissioner Natasha Bosso.
Here.
And also Commissioner, our alternate, Steve Link is excused absence, and Commissioner Alternate Ben Rubin.
Here.
Conflict of interest statement is any planning commission member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare the conflict at this time. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the planning commission members. Do we have any public comments?
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Karen Canrato. I live on Hoag Road. I think, excuse me, I'm here to let you know that I oppose the Riverwalk project. Um, and I know that'll be when you consider it, I would like you to think of all the consequences that that will occur. Um, primarily, it's agricultural land, prime, valuable, unique composition. Um, world quality farmland. Once it's paved over, it'll be gone forever. It's built on a flood plain that is becoming more likely to be flooded in the future. It, um, it not only would have homes and lives lost in the river bottom itself if it floods, but if you aren't using that land to absorb floodwater, it will go downstream and upstream flooding more than what Riverco the possibility of, as well as farms and towns downstream. The infrastructure, um, is, you know, a cost to taxpayers or existing. Um, our very hardship of increased costs for water and sewer, and that will increase with new development. And we've passed on to new residents as well as your existing residents. Um, including future maintenance fees when the develops, developers will no longer be here to share in the cost. There's a loss of repairing habitat and corridors, which becomes more increasingly more important as the accumulative effect of all the housing development that is going on everywhere across our county occurs. Um, that will affect all local and migrating wildlife. You have hospitals and ambulance fire services. All of those will be affected. You're talking about, they're talking about um, fifty-five, even year older population. So you're talking about an increased use of doctors and hospitals, ambulances, fire services, fire department services um, that are already inadequate, and how much of an increase will that occur? Um, even in terms of fire department coming to help if someone has fallen down or, you know, non-emergency situations, all of those are affected with traffic as well. Um, so we're talking not only increase of traffic with, um, with your ambulances and fire services, but also with the cars that will be put on the prop, on the repairing property, the houses and the population, the roads that go with it. Um, you're talking about pollution, air, lights, noise, all of those will increase, um, whether it's music or gunning motors or whatever. Um, it looks like a beautiful plan. The flaws have been minimized. Um, it's just a project that's geared for the wrong spot. They're trying to build it in the wrong place. There's also, um, gated communities that diminish the, you know, the increased segregation, diminish interaction, which has been a nice part of Riverbank with a lot of intermingling. Um, we're talking about Laughco, we're talking about urban sprawl, leapfrogging, all things that are against the state desires. And that it's also against everything that Laughco stands for. They're trying to, um, in, uh, encourage an orderly growth, um, and avoiding prime ag land. So again, Riverbank already has plenty of, um, non-prime ag land to be developed. It's already been approved, so please consider this project very carefully when you give your recommendation. Thank you very much for your time.
Hello, my name is Fred Walton. I'm from Modesto. I live on Hoag Road. Um, I am concerned about the Riverwalk project too. I think it's in the wrong place. I think the river bottom, it'd be very important when you give your recommendation that you go down to the river bottom, drive around, walk around, look at it, and ask yourself what would be the best thing for this river bottom and the river and the bluffs. I see it more as the river bottom like a park, like Reseda Park, Dryden Golf Course Green Belt area versus all this compaction of this high-density homes. They have a high and low and medium density, but it looks all high-density to me. So I don't think that fits down that river bottom at all, and it's good farmland. And, um, you know, as populations grow, you do need green belt areas. And what would be better than by, you know, a river bottom or by a river for a greenbelt? Now, the top of it where the bluff is, that goes out to Patterson, it's all types of geography down there. That's why you need to drive down and look at it. And so you can make a good recommendation. The top of it should just continue like Park Ridge or Del Rio. That's what fits in that area, and commercial along Patterson there, as it's been coming along. And I, I see that, all types of real estate are very important in this area, but, um, there, I don't see that high-density compaction type real estate. And below, if you had to develop it, I look at more at ranchettes, five, ten, fifteen, twenty acre lots. There's a lot of red lights when you think about developing something on that river bottom, and those all have to be considered from sewer to flood to traffic to taking up prime farmland. So do yourselves a favor. If you would, I challenge you to go down there, drive down there, walk around, and then ask yourself, what would you like this area look like in fifty to a hundred years? Thank you.
Good evening, uh, Milt Truweiler, born in Stanislas County, and I'm a lifetime Stanislas resident. I brought the globe again because this is our planet. This is the only place, this is the place we all live on the earth. And population on our planet has changed quite a bit. In eighteen oh two, it was one billion people. In nineteen, in, uh, nineteen forty-five, when I was born, it was two and a half billion people. Today, it's over eight billion people. In two thousand and sixty, it's projected that we'll have ten billion people on our planet. And in two thou, uh, twenty-one hundred, we'll have twelve billion people on our planet. Everybody needs clean air, clean water, and food to stay alive. The prime farmland in the proposed Riverwalk project is a natural resource that cannot be replaced or mitigated because it's a unique, na, natural, its quality and its location. You can't find anything to replace it because there is no farmland in the world that can bash its ability to grow food. Because you're the City of Riverbank Planning Commissioners, you represent all the people of Ri, uh, Riverbank, not the developers. You're the planning commission. You must also look out for the good of our descendants because they too are not old enough or are not born yet. We have our children, our brothers and sisters' families, our nieces, our nephews, and our, uh, all of their families to look after, look for. We have to do what's best for them, just like our ancestors did with best for us. A hundred and thirty years ago, our ancestors formed Modesto Irrigation District and Turlock Irrigation District to build the largest dam in the United States at the time. We want our descendants to look back and say, look at what our ancestors did for us. They saved the land called Riverwalk so we could have food to eat. We also can grow up instead of out. We can build high-rise apartment dwelling units, high-rise condominiums, townhouses on the infill areas in all of the Stanislas, Stanislas County cities, especially in Riverbank. You have all kinds of infill areas. There is also an abundance of poor soils in Stanislas County for the developers to build houses on, like the areas south of the Altamont Pass, or the areas west of Interstate Five, or the areas east of Oakdale, or northwest of Patterson. How is it that so many people worship money, power, and pleasure? My biggest disappointment with people is that too many of them are dishonest, untrustworthy, and unethical. One last subject. How is it that someone can get control of you as an individual who is honest, trustworthy, and ethical person? Three ways that they can, they can do it. They can try to bribe you. They can try to blackmail you, or they can try to imitate you. Please be strong. Save our farmland for our descendants. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay, public comments closed. Moving on to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the planning, excuse me, commission unless otherwise requested by an individual planning commission member or member of the public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by motion of the planning commission. We have item two point one, which is posting of the agenda. Item two point two, approval of the March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four agenda. And then item two point three, approval of the February twenty twenty-four planning commission meeting minutes. We seek a motion.
Second it.
Okay, roll call. Um, Vice Chair Zamora.
Yes.
Commissioner Dynan.
Yes.
Commissioner Alterman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bosso.
Yes.
Commissioner Rubin. Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Passes. Next, we have a public, planning commission, public worship and other matters. Item three point one, City of Riverbank, two thousand and twenty-three Housing Element Annual Progress Report. An annual progress report of the implementation of the City of Riverbank's housing element, one of the elements of the City of Riverbank's twenty, two thousand and five to twenty twenty-five general plan.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, this is John Anderson. I am consultant planning, planning director, um, with the City of Riverbank, working with Miguel Galvez, and then also with Michael Royo, one of my staff members in the audience. Um, Miguel is sick today, so I'm standing, sorry. Uh, it's kind of the way this works. I wanted to introduce Michael and this item specifically. Um, this is an annual, annual, uh, progress report. They were responsible to present to the State of California. It just so happens at the same time the city's going through, as you're aware, a housing element update. Um, that's a big part of the effort that we're going through at this moment as well, but we still have these annual obligations that need to be presented. So with no further ado, Michael has a PowerPoint presentation to present, and, uh, we should be good to go. Any questions of us at the end? Um, uh, please let us know, and then we'll try to do our best to answer those questions. All right, Michael.
Uh, good evening, commissioners. As Mr. Anderson brought out, my name is Michael Royo, uh, contract planner with the City of Riverbank and an assistant planner with J B Anderson Land Use Planning. So before you, and for your consideration this evening, is the two thousand and twenty-three Housing Element Annual Progress Report. So what is it and why is it important? So for the last fifty-five years, the State of California has required all local governments, both cities and counties, to adequate, and here's the key, adequately plan for the housing needs of all in the community. Everyone in this case is categorized by income levels, varying income levels all the way from very low to moderate to above moderate income. Now, local governments can satisfy this requirement by having an adopted housing plan or a housing element, as it's also known. The housing element is but one component of the city's general plan. And as we know, the general plan is very important as the general plan is the city's guide or the city's blueprint for how the city will grow and how the city will be developed. So next slide. Perfect. So for some background, again, cities and counties in California are required to submit this annual progress report uh, to highlight the progress which has been made towards increasing its housing stock and meeting the goals established during the calendar year being reported. Now, this annual progress report must be submitted to two state agencies, as the slide shows, that, uh, one being in no particular order, but the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, O P R, and the California Department of Housing and Community Development, H C D. Excuse me, but the, while we're here, before the A P R can be sent to these two state agencies, the progress report must go to the local legislature, which in our case is the city council. So ultimately, we're here to seek your recommendation to counsel to direct staff to send this report to these two state agencies. So for some context, these housing plans or these housing elements, they are updated and they're planned, and they cover a period of about eight years. For our reporting year, two thousand and twenty-three, it just so happens that it also, well, it falls within the fifth cycle housing element, but it also concludes the fifth cycle housing element. So we have a unique opportunity this evening to not only review the, the reporting year, which is two thousand and twenty-three, but also to take a look at the entire fifth cycle element, meaning what did the City of Riverbank accomplish within the fifth cycle? And the fifth cycle spanned from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty-three, the last calendar day in two thousand and fifteen and the last calendar day of two thousand and twenty-three. So how did Riverbank do? How did, how did we do? So the City of Riverbank received six development applications for architectural site plan review. Of course, they received more than six, but six strictly for ho, for housing and, uh, dwell, dwelling units. Six were received, five were approved. The one that's currently pending, the, at the bottom, bottom row, A S P R oh eight, two thousand and twenty-three, it's pending because the applicant is currently revising submittal materials to be consistent with the city's general plan. One note to, to take note of is that if this last, um, development application is approved, if the forty units are approved, it will be reported in the upcoming housing element, the sixth cycle housing element, which Mr. Anderson, Anderson referenced. So it won't be counted or reported in the fifth cycle, which we're going over this evening. So new construction, the city received one hundred and forty-five total building permits. Rather, they issued one hundred and forty-five building permits. Um, one hundred and forty were specifically for single-family dwelling units, and five were for accessory dwelling units. Now, the second half of this slide, we're sort of taking a step back. We're zooming out. We're going to look now as the, as the end of it says, the fifth cycle. So these percentages, had you add the, added them up, they exceed a hundred percent because tho, those percentages are respective for each income category. So the City of Riverbank, ten percent of the very low income goal was, uh, accomplished, eighteen percent of the low income, two percent. Uh, I think the staff report says under three, but it's a little more than two, but two percent of the moderate income goal. And the lion's share, uh, progress was eighty percent of the moderate income goal. So again, this is the, the snapshot of the entire, uh, fifth cycle housing element. So if you focus on the column one, the arena allocation by income level, that shows what was established at the outset of the housing element cycle. That was what H C D and Stanislas Council of Government said, this is what the City of Riverbank, this is what they need to adequately plan for. One thousand two hundred and eighty units. So as you look to the right of the table, you can see year by year, two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty-three, how many units were, um, permitted and approved and issued. At the total, sorry, it's kind of cut off. Uh, you can see the total units by year and then by, um, income level. On the right, the third column three, that shows the total units, um, to date. At the very bottom, again, sorry, I apologize, it's five hundred and nine units total for the entire fifth cycle. So you can see that though the aim was one thousand two hundred and eighty, only five hundred and nine were built, and that's okay. It's important to, to note as we move towards, um, updating the sixth cycle housing element. Though the, the, the aim or the goal for the City of Riverbank has, uh, it's a little bit lofty. It's three thousand five hundred and ninety-one units for the sixth cycle. The, the, the imperative is that the city adequately plans for that moving forward. That it can, that it can show that, yes, we can accommodate this given our sites inventory, but it's not required to build or develop. And finally, uh, pursuant to the sequel to the California Environmental, Environmental Quality Act, the sequel guidelines, uh, the annual progress report is not considered a project. Therefore, no environmental review is necessary for this project. So finally, staff's recommendation is is that staff recommends you, the planning commission, approve resolution number two thousand and twenty-four dash zero zero one, recommending the city council to direct staff to transmit the report to the Governor's Office of Planning and Research and the State Department of Housing and Community Development. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to, we'd be happy to answer those.
Any, any comments from the planning commission?
I, I have a question, actually. Um, I'm looking at the fifth cycle housing element in two thousand and sixteen. Uh, well, overall, what I'm saying is every year except for two thousand and sixteen, it looked like we had new, uh, residences built in the above moderate category. Two thousand and sixteen did not, uh, was there something that happened specifically that year, or was that just based on what applicants that came into the city? I didn't know if there was any other, um, anything's going on in the economy or, or in, you know, in the state that would.
Well, you kind of had a lull, um, again, John Anderson, contract planner of the City of, of Riverbank, um, you kind of had a lull of construction until Crossroads West came on, right? So the development really was happening east, east Riverbank. Um, so that's probably what you're seeing there. Obviously, interest rates were more favorable back then than they are now, but, um, yeah, I think that's probably what you're seeing in the, in the findings. Yep. Yep.
We invite public comments at this time? Yes. Anybody have any public comments on the on the presentation?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Yes, I was listening to it carefully, and I see your sphere of influence already, and I see a lot of land area out there. I'm kind of surprised that there isn't more room. In other words, it doesn't look to me that there is a need for Riverwalk at all, and since it is what I described before, the best farmland in the world, you know, you need to stop that. I mean, just think of what our descendants are going to think of, think, you know? I mean, I look back at the TID and the MID, and I say, I thank you for that, because we do have the water to irrigate that for hundreds and hundreds of years. And we have land masses all over the city. Again, build up. I mean, what's wrong with a three or four-story condominium or apartment complex? You don't even see it if you plant a tree. Most trees will grow up to sixty feet. I go into Sacramento, downtown Sacramento, they have eight-story buildings. You don't see them because the trees grow over them. You go to downtown Modesto with that one building, the retirement center in the center, you don't see it because of the trees. I I don't understand, when we have the best farmland, if we were living in the Altamont, fine, spread the houses out, who cares? It's not taking away our food production properties. But here in Riverbank, it is. And you need to preserve that farmland. And you can do it. It's not like you can't do it. You've got the land to do it all over here. You know, you've got the you've got the east side, you've got the west side, you've got all the way to the new Costco, you've got all that land there. But if you grow up in just the vacant lots, put in four or five-story buildings, and that would also cover your low income, because they could, someone, I mean, you could build, I don't know, one-bedroom complexes. I'm sure the developers don't make as much money, or it would be being done. So apparently, the developers make their money on mid-income housing. It just seems that way. That must be the case, because it's pretty obvious that's the only houses you're building. Well, we've got to get away from that. We have to think about our descendants and say, hey, this is not right. We've got to do something for everybody. I don't feel I'm any better than someone who is not making a lot of money or someone who's making a lot of money. We're all human beings. We're all people. And we just have to do the right thing now. If we don't, who's going to do it? Are we going to look back, you know, or our descendants, again, will look back and say, well, they didn't do a good job? We don't have food. We're going to have twelve, possibly twelve billion people. Some people think you can get the food from other countries. It's not going to happen, because other countries are going to be feeding their people. They're not going to ship it to the United States. We can grow our own land right here, and we can build all the houses we went on the poor land in this area. Thank you.
I do have one question. Although the state requires the allocation of land for each of those different income level buildings, did they set minimum requirements or have they ever penalized anybody for not reaching a certain threshold within each of those categories?
That's a very good question. It's a very good question. And I've been doing this land planning stuff for forty years. State of California has never really penalized anybody. However, they have become more aggressive, especially in the communities that refuse to meet and or attempt to meet the housing goals that are distributed by the local cog. In this case, it's distributed by Stan cog. It it and the the penalties we're talking about is to withhold certain grants, opportunities for transportation funding and other 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 aspects. So we're going to see more, I think we're going to see more and more of that, you know, in the next, you know, especially after this sixth cycle and others. But historically, the answer is no. One thing that you got to keep in mind is that that what's being presented as as local obligations, in this case, obligations for the City of Riverbank, are nothing more than a goal. In other words, this is what we're attempting to achieve. The city needs to demonstrate that those sites are available. That's the exercise we went through with the fifth cycle, and certainly the exercise we're going through with the sixth cycle, just making sure they're available. Couple other responses. Obviously, we don't want to talk about Riverwalk specifically, because that's not being presented tonight. But, you know, with what's gone on with Crossroads West and what developments happening in town with the tiny homes, the City of Riverbank has done a pretty good job of maximizing on density, and we're looking at average, increasing average density on some of these projects to eight, ten units to the acre, which on average is is pretty good. It's not a five- or six-story residential structure, but it's certainly more dense than the City of Riverbank has seen in a long time. So with the Crossroads project, John, John knows that, you know, there's going to be apartments as part of that development, and there's going to be some condominium-type development, that that's definitely part of that overall plan. And probably something to look at is is just the city's inventory as part of this next cycle, sixth cycle, and where they've identified potential sites, because the numbers that have come out the next cycle are much larger than the twelve fifty that we got this last cycle. So again, the city has an obligation not to build it, because we're not, we're not in the business to build it, but we're in the business to demonstrate to the state exactly where we have those sites available, not only within the city limits, but also within the sphere of influence of the community. So all in relationship to the adopted general plan. That's kind of the, you know, the general plan is, you know, the thirty thousand-foot elevation view of what's happening in the city. And then, of course, you got your zoning and specific plan areas and others. But anyway, in this case, it's the specific plans that we've used, like Crossroads and Crossroads West, to really help implement and to shape, you know, what the goals are of the city. So anyway, so hopefully that helps answer your question. Thank you.
Check to see if there's any more public comments, and then we need to close it.
Okay. One more.
Karen, I live on Oak Road. I do have a question that that you brought up that I thought of as you were talking, because it sounds like Riverbank has gone from, you know, a little over a thousand housing units to a big leap of more. And I don't know if that puts them at risk, if they have to to honor that, if that means you're searching out areas that you have to develop. I don't know if that just put in increased the pressure on you and the city council to find land, more land to these increased numbers that you're talking about housing development? I don't know who to ask. Yeah, yeah.
So so that So to paraphrase the question, it has everything to do with, you know, where are these numbers coming from and what 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 impact is that having on the city? And, you know, does the city have to demonstrate where those sites are available? So again, it's it's, you know, another state mandate, unfunded state mandate that's handed down through the local transportation agencies, in this case, Stanislaus Association of Governments. They assign a number with the various cities in Stanislaus County and also the county. County of Stanislaus is not exempt from this as well. And and again, it's a it's a goal, and it's up to us, you know, as city representatives, to be able to demonstrate to the state exactly where those sites are available in the community that would meet those goals and objectives. Not that we're going to physically build them, but we have to have them available. They have to be available in resource. And and the fact of the matter is, you know, in many jurisdictions, they actually have improve, actually have obligations, obligations where a local government physically would have to go in and rezone properties to accommodate these types of numbers that have been handed down by, in essence, by the state of California. So that would be part of the work program, so to speak, in the housing element that you guys are going to be seeing in the next couple of months, probably the next couple of months. We're doing inventory right now. We're having some issues with GIS, but yeah, so we'll be doing inventory, and you'll see exactly where that's coming from. But again, it's the idea that there may have to be some rezoning activities in order to to provide the opportunity, not to physically make it happen, but provide the opportunity for these types of housing units to come in. Now, the last three or four years, the state has done other things with state housing law to help create opportunities for additional housing, and that is, you know, the ability to do an accessory dwelling unit, ADUs, you guys have heard a lot about that. You've also heard a lot about junior ADUs, conversion of a garage, an example. Those are also opportunities where we can increase housing opportunities within the community, not not building on greenfields, you know, in essence, you know, trying to, you know, take care of those infill opportunities with larger lots. So and that will also be part of the inventory that's presented, is part of the housing element. But the bottom line is, unfortunately, you know, Riverbank, just like every other city and county in the state of California, still has to provide these opportunities. So we'll, in all likelihood, have to go back in and suggest there's going to be some sites that need to be rezoned or designated for multifamily housing or single-family housing or whatever it is. As it relates to affordable housing, you know, Riverbank's been very lucky to have some fairly significant affordable housing projects come forward. The amount of grant funding for those projects has not been favorable in the last four or five years, but we have been able to get some good projects. And for the most part, they've been managed very well. So I'm pretty pretty proud of a couple of those projects. Anyway, okay? Thank you.
There was the mention of resolution twenty twenty four zero zero one. Is that something that we have to approve here tonight? It was in the slide.
Yeah. Okay, can you close the public hearing?
Yeah, okay. Public comment period now is closed on the workshop.
Okay, yeah, then we'll take a vote on
Can we get
Recommend to city council.
Okay, can we read that resolution? I don't have it here in front of me.
I'll read it in front of us. It's it's lengthy, but it's a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Riverbank, California, recommending the city council receive and accept the housing element annual progress report for calendar year twenty twenty three, and authorize staff to submit the report to the governor, the Governor's Office of Planning and Research and the California Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, John. Can we get a motion to accept?
I move to accept item as submitted.
I will second.
We'll call.
Okay, Vice Chair Zamora.
Yes.
Commissioner Dinan.
Yes.
Commissioner Alterman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bosso.
Yes.
And Commissioner Rubin.
Yes.
It's approved five oh.
Motion passes. Excellent. Any further planning commission comments? Any county referral correspondence that we need to review? Staff comments, item six point one.
To give you a brief overview of what's going on, obviously, this housing element, APR needs to go to city council. What's going to end up happening is that the report itself will be presented to the state of California, and then we'll, we probably won't get it, get this item to the city council before the deadline with the state, so it'll probably come back to the city council on on April ninth or perhaps April twenty third, but that's that's our issue to work with. As it relates to current applications, we've got several architectural site plans, Black Diamond, Lucky Tiny Homes, another one that we're working on, that would both be a rezone and a and a site plan approval. Riverwalk is moving forward. The the comment period for the EIR was extended, and they are converting some, all of that document into Spanish. So the website's up to date and expresses the new comment period for that. As I said earlier, we are working on the housing element. Looks like that'll be coming to you guys probably next next couple couple of months. Let me see what else I got here. Working on another architectural site plan, application for Sierra Village at Claus and Stanislaus. Costco Car Wash, we're working through that, although it's under construction right now, which is really bizarre, but here we go. Moncheen wants a, is it, huh? Oh, that part's not, okay. Downtown facade program, the city council has adopted and implemented opportunities for money for the downtown facade program. We need to put together some processing procedures, so we're going to be working to do that. There's an ongoing need and concern regarding itinerant vendors and taco trucks and whatnot, so we're going to start mapping out those locations and working with environmental resources and stuff and trying to trying to get those folks to be in compliance, because a lot of them are operating out time outside of, you know, the normal inspection hours. So we need to work with environmental resources to get them to come out there in the evenings, which is when they're practicing. I'm trying to think what else, what else we got going on here. Got a couple, we got a update to Airbnb, Airbnb ordinance that we got in draft form that we're going to be bringing forward to you guys, and also a massage ordinance. That's another another item that's been on our list to work on. I think that's pretty much it that I have at this point.
Question?
Yes.
Is the downtown facade program?
Yeah, so if if you have a property owner that wants to improve their property, and and the way the programs work works is if they wanted to do extra work, in this case, you know, the the frontage against the street, there's a certain pot of monies the city's made, city council's made available for that. I believe the amount is up to fifteen thousand dollars per property. So but there's just procedures that what they need to follow. We've got a couple applicants that have presented something, and we need to, we need to put together procedures so that it's fair and equitable amongst all business owners and and the and the rules of the game are well well thought out and and advertised.
Right, thank you.
Okay? All right, thank you.
Okay, with that, we've reached the end of our agenda. Our next regular planning commission meeting will be April sixteenth at six P M. Meetings adjourned.